The thing we're gonna do is call a meeting, order a plea. It's in, uh, gonna be the pledge of allegiance to be led by Commissioner Bedford and invitation by Robert Arby.
I plead allegiance to the Lord as United States of America, to the freedom of our own right to choose. One amendment, under God, in the principle of liberty, reason, justice, and law.
Father, we come to you tonight, Lord, so thank you for this wonderful evening that you blessed us with. We thank you for the many people that are in attendance tonight. We ask, Father, to go about our meeting, that all good things come for the benefit of the community and those present. And just thank you, Lord, for all that you do in our lives. We ask you things in the precious name of Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right, next we have roll call, please, ma'am.
Mr. Berry?
Here.
Mr. David?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here.
Mr. Mike and Chip?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
All in attendance.
Thank you. Next we have is approval or correction from our prior meetings of July the 16th that you should have in front of you.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, what you have in front of you is a bit of a redlined copy that we're asking you to approve with changes. And I wanted to let you know, too, that we are gonna be doing study sessions, minutes, they're gonna be very brief, but we don't have the current study session in front of you, and we'll do two next month. So, right now, we just need to pass the redlined version that's in front of you.
Okay. Any questions for Kate on that? Not in, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion, motion accept the minutes is presented.
We have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now the fun part starts, awards, presentations, and appointments. We've got a couple of proclamations here for Tyler Finley and Hunter Jones and the Mount Pleasant Basset. So, these gentlemen will come forward. All right, guys, why don't we turn around that way everybody can get pictures of y'all? They don't want it to me, I'm robbing them. Okay? And congratulations, really. Whereas the city of Mount Pleasant and all its citizens are rightfully proud of its young residents, and whereas the city recognizes Tyler Finley and Hunter Jones as well as the Mount Pleasant Basset team as an integral part of this community, and whereas in 2016, Tyler urged his parents to help him form a fishing team, thus the Mount Pleasant High School Basset team was founded. It was in 2017 that Tyler and Hunter were inevitably brought together by the love of the sport. Joining forces, the boys went on to win the first tournament there and fish together. Where was it? This win would catapult them and the Mount Pleasant, that Basset team into going to the national stage, whereas this year the Mount Pleasant High School Basset team placed in the top 300 nationally out of 17,000 teams. Wow. I gotta get caught back up. Uh, and earned spots competing in the 2019 Bass National Championship. Out of 300 teams that participated, Tyler and Hunter put a solid third place finish in the nation. Each of these two anchors were awarded a $3,000 scholarship to any school of their choice in addition to a full ride scholarship to Bethel University to fish on their bass. Whereas Tyler Finley currently attends Mount Pleasant High School with a 3.7 GPA, he is also one of the National Bass Trail Junior Angler of the Year. Hunter Jones is a native of Mount Pleasant and currently attends Hampshire High School with a 3.7 GPA in letters of fishing, basketball, and baseball. Whereas these individuals and their team represent the Mount Pleasant, Murray County, and the state of Tennessee with the highest standards of participation in mound, therefore I, Bill White, Mayor of the City of Mount Pleasant, proclaim the date of September 1st, 2019, is Tyler Finley and Hunter Jones' day. Congratulations. If you have anything, if you have anything you'd like to say to the audience, or...
Yes. I'd like to thank all my sponsors, the City of Mount Pleasant, and just all my family members for allowing us to get here before we are today. I'd like to thank the City of Mount Pleasant, um, all the Basset team members, all the people that keep the city safe, uh, thank all the support that we have.
Hey, if I see it coming in, I wore a shirt, David. I like it.
And so my understanding is the reason we chose September 1st to be their day, that someone's gonna be on ESPN, correct?
It's all ESPN at noon.
Okay, so everybody knows that, just make sure.
Awesome.
Okay, could you put that on the...
And again...
City thanks for making history.
Uh, not just these two gentlemen, and thank y'all for bringing it up, it's this whole team. And their sponsors, the guys that go around and travel with them, they couldn't do it without everybody, so again, thank y'all very much.
And all of you are welcome to stay for an extremely exciting commission meeting that's about to happen. Or you can leave.
Y'all need to try their part at the U.S. Festival, too. They sell out every year.
That's fantastic, again, I, I, that's wonderful, prior commission, wonderful, that's, that's awesome.
Lot of hard work out there.
Oh, yeah, that's the reason I made sure, because they can't do it without them, no question. All right, next we have completion and review of unfinished business from our prior meetings. Ordinance 2019-1039, a public hearing and final reading. An ordinance limiting water and sewer rates and charges to the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee is set forth in Schedule 8, Section 18-125 of the Mount Pleasant Municipal Code.
And Mayor and Commissioners, you actually have a copy in front of you that is the final version, we continue to make changes to it, uh, Lewis County was not in there before, and we wanted to make sure that we get that index correctly. You also have you that looks like this, which is a comparison of the current practice and what we're recommending. And, uh, there's very little change, except that we are recommending that we do away with the $25 service fee that occurs in the first month, instead give people $26, and only if they don't pay that would they pay a reconnection fee that is $75, it's the 50 and the 25 put together. And then if you want after-hours reconnection, then that is an additional $25. Um, but I think a lot of that is in here, if you've got any questions, we're happy to add that. Um, again, we did add the Lewis County rates, that, um, all that project started, or most of us were here, we have updated. Uh, the only change in the rates is the outside of the city, which was rounded up to 23, we had rounded up all of the other charges to 23, um, in, in December of 2018, that was just missed at that time. Happy to answer any questions if you've got them. I think we've covered every base, we've had everybody look at this possible.
I can tell you, as late as of this morning, when we were going over this through Cory and Kate and myself, I'll have to follow Cory, and then she recognized and just appeared that we were adding fees every time you turned around, and we just didn't feel like that was right.
Correct.
Give everybody a chance to get it paid, that gives you ample time, and then if not, we've done all we can possibly do.
Not gonna charge you to reconnection month, we'll just...
Unless we've absolutely done, and so, we felt like that would be more fair to everybody and... So, with that being said, any other questions?
They did a public hearing, the final reading.
That's right, so, anyone in the audience like to comment concerning this ordinance?
Sure, we got posters, several places.
We'll post it on our website, we'll post it everywhere we possibly can, and Facebook, and everything, you're gonna get into the social media policy next, but, uh, we'll post it everywhere we can.
Right.
And then we're trying to do kind of a paragraph version, where somebody doesn't have to read the ordinance, but just, these are the changes, um, to make it easier.
I think it's cleaner, I think it'll be a lot easier for everyone to understand. All right, let the committee show that there were no one from the audience who wanted to speak, please, ma'am. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to be accepted, ordinance 2019-1039 is presented.
We have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. B, Resolution 2019-23, a resolution revising the employee compensation for the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, the fiscal year beginning July the 1st of 19, ending June 30th of 2020.
And Mayor and Commissioners, this is something we put in front of you each year. Uh, because you voted on a 3% cost of living, the compensation plan has been adjusted from minimum to maximum by 3%. Uh, we, uh, changed two titles, one was accountant to, uh, grant, grant supervisor accountant, and that is the position of Kelly, where she does payable, so she's taken on a grant to administer, and then the other is the customer service lead, that we changed to customer service supervisor, and that's the only changes since last year.
Any questions for Kate? Figure nine, entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept the three changes presented.
We have a motion, we have a second. We have a second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number seven, monthly report from the mayor, I don't have anything this month. Number eight, monthly financial budget report. Just a little...
Good evening, Al, we have been very currently very busy this past month. Uh, beginning on August 2nd, we began converting our student utility billing, we had already converted, uh, our general ledger and payroll, um, starting August 2nd, we started utility billing and, uh, property taxing. Um, there's been some hiccups and some, you know, bugs to be worked out, but all in all, it's going pretty well. Um, but we have had, had some, um, issues to have to work through, some things have come up that we didn't, weren't even aware of, and, um, been able to address a few things and getting, and getting things streamlined, and, uh, I think after it's all said and done, and there's all the bugs worked out, and things worked out, but I think we'll end up with a much better system than we have. Uh, certainly less antiquated, uh, the old system we were using was still on the old old system, so, um, it's now...
Really old.
It was really, really old, so it, it was time for it to be upgraded, and so, um, that has taken up a big majority of all your time, as well as, uh, working through these changes, and, um, getting them implemented, along with implementing the software, too, so, it's been, uh, challenging, but I think our, well, our staff has been very receptive in her, um, and her getting right in there and learning it, and when it's all, like I said, when it's all said and done, I think they will enjoy it, too. It, it does have so much more capabilities than the old system had, and will give us more, um, opportunities to better serve our community in the future, uh, with the better system. We've, uh, ending the current month of July, uh, we're right on target with the budget being the first month in the year. Generally have a little bit more expenses in the first year, in the first month, uh, because there's, there'll be a lot of things that, um, we, uh, have budgeted for that will generally be, be spent in that first month, um, insurance being one of those, so, current, so it makes our cash flow a little bit more lean, uh, but we're still actually, uh, maintaining a good, good cash flow and all the fun. Uh, of course, the water is always, gonna always be issue, but we are, uh, we're holding our own on that and getting started with a new project. Uh, we've been getting a lot of, uh, deals from our engineers, which kind of indicate that they're working on it, and we should start seeing actual, um, prints and, um, some actual, well, we'll be able to see the, uh, begins before, too long, we hope, so...
We have actually a follow-up meeting, uh, upcoming.
Yeah, so we, so we're getting close on that. Uh, the, uh, July, the expenditures ended up at about 6.3% of the budget, so we're, like I said, we're right on, right on target, we should be just, just wanting to use. Have any questions?
No, Mary. We need a motion, right?
We do.
Need a motion?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second.
I'll second that motion.
We have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Monthly report from city manager?
Uh, Mayor and Commissioners, the only thing I have is, you did hear a presentation from Trey, it's a study session, I'll come back to you in September with maybe some thoughts on that proposal, and I wanted to let you know that, uh, the, uh, general sessions, part one, last court date will be this coming Monday, and they will have their first court date, uh, September 3rd, the Tuesday after Labor Day, and the long dockets are over with, and they are gonna have a September 14th, which is a Saturday, at 10:30, we're gonna come in September. So, that's a really big deal, that has taken a long time to happen, and, um, we are so fortunate that we have not had a significant issue, security-wise, uh, danger-wise, and we've made a lot of progress in the last two years, and we appreciate this commission and prior commission's support of that, because we did donate the property and it, it, there's a happy ending.
Yeah, absolutely.
Cool.
That's it, I just want to...
Yeah, it'll be great. All right, number 10, special reports from other city departments of wastewater and Mount Pleasant gas.
There are no reports, Mayor.
Okay, that's good news. Number 11, new business, uh, ordinance 2019-1041, and this is a first reading, correct?
Correct, there's, this is not a public hearing, this is first reading.
That's right, an ordinance limiting Title 14 zoning and land use control, Chapter 2 zoning ordinance in Mount Pleasant Municipal Code, same being MAP Incorporated, oh, zoning ordinance in City of Mount Pleasant, including municipal zoning, MAP Incorporated there in by rezoning a property of residential low-density R1 to neighborhood commercial CQ.
Mayor and Commissioners, uh, this, uh, as the mayor stated, this is the first reading on this, this was approved by the planning commission to move up to the city commission, and, um, we did have notices sent to, uh, all the surrounding areas, we send those notices certified, so that people do not come in and sign off on the certified notice, and they don't get it. Um, and so, I've had some states, they did not get it, but we've got files saying that we did send all those. Um, and this will be up for a public hearing the next month, and I just thought it might be helpful if Cory kind of gave you an idea of, you're not talking about further future use for this parcel, you're talking about appropriateness of the zone for this parcel in that area, given a set of circumstances that should be considered, as the planning commission did.
This is not, this is one of the, probably second or third of these y'all have looked at in the past couple of months, and I think a lot of times the issue gets to being, like, future use of this parcel, so right now the only thing that's before you is whether or not this parcel should be rezoned to neighborhood commercial. It, it went before the planning commission, it was recommended to you, um, to be rezoned, so when you are considering that, your options like before are to deny the application, to approve the zoning application, or to send it back to the planning commission to, to talk about it some more, and then give another recommendation or, um, to go from there. So, you're only looking at the rezoned this one parcel, not any future use of it at this, this stage. If, if it does go further, it would have to go through site plans and things like that, which would come back through here, but a different way.
And, and again, this is the first reading.
First reading, that's right. Any questions? Being done, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion that we approved, uh, as recommended by the planning commission to rezon the, the parcel for residential low-density that they would commercial.
We have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. We'll do a roll call on this, please, ma'am.
Okay. Mr. Berry?
No, because the property goes down behind that church, and we already have issues with the property that's already there, next to the church.
Mr. David?
Yes.
Mr. Mike and Chip?
Yes.
And Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Order one, ready, take.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, B, Resolution 2019-26, a resolution by the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, to establish a social media policy.
And Mayor and Commissioners, this is something that's been on our agenda to do for quite some time, police department's got a little bit ahead of us, and they have done theirs, but this kind of reduces in writing what, um, what sites the city owns, that we take responsibility for what you see, because we put it on there, it also takes responsibility for what employees can or cannot do on social media if they are representing the city, and it also changes us to a government site, which is not interactive, it is, is a method of getting information out, and, um, probably something that we need to just move forward on, and, uh, we've kind of spent quite a bit of time looking at it, if you remember, it was on the end in the last month, and we, we put it off, and I, I think we're ready for it to move forward. Anything I missed, Cory?
No, you've all reviewed it in your packets, so if you have any questions, we're happy to try and answer.
I appreciate the work that Kate and Cory have done on this, as I said, they want, they don't need me writing. I don't even have paper, so...
I'd like a motion, Mayor, President, 2019-26, social media policy.
We have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I should have mentioned that we'll have every employee sign off that they received this as well.
Thank you very much. Resolution 2019-27, a resolution of the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, authorizing payment in lieu of taxes for the Mount Pleasant power system from the year 2019 to 2020.
And Mayor and Commissioners, this resolution and the next two are standard, every year we have to adopt the resolution to authorize the payment in lieu of taxes, this one in particular is the power system.
Correct.
And it is a good plan.
It is a great...
We appreciate it.
Always do, yeah. The power system is running, I mean, not that all departments are, but...
Kate, with people here, you might tell them how much this is to the city.
I don't know if I know that or off the top of my head, do you? Mine's probably off the top of my head, they run around 30,000 a month.
A month, a month.
Upward, between 300, 400,000 a year that comes back into the city revenue.
That's right.
Mm-hmm. And it's based on their, uh, their revenue, it's a calculation, the state gives us to make that calculation, uh, it's based on their revenues as average of three years, I think, two, three, five years, and, uh, their, uh, six act that's basis.
And it's, it's no very area.
It's a set formula, huh?
So, it's not something we just arbitrarily decide, it, it is a calculation that the state gets us to use.
Okay, all right, uh, that being said, we have a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-27.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, B, Resolution 2019-28, a resolution by the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, authorizing a payment in lieu of taxes for the Mount Pleasant gas department, same here?
Yes, uh, Mayor and Commissioners, same thing, this is for the gas department, exact same thing, the state has informed where we follow, and this is more of the 70, 80,000 range over the course of the year that will come back into the city revenue.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll take it.
Absolutely. Any questions?
No, sir.
Entertain a motion?
I'd like a motion to accept Resolution 2019-28 as well.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Yes, Resolution 2019-30, a resolution ending the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, employee handbook.
And Mayor and Commissioners, this is something we also do each year, is if there are any updates to the manual, that is now just in its, starting its third year, the first time that we had a, uh, updated our employee handbook. There's three changes in here, uh, one is that we allow, when there's a demotion, uh, uh, recommended, that you are allowed to have a hearing before that demotion is made final. If you are on a performance improvement plan as an employee, you don't earn bonus sick leave or your birthday, uh, day, and then there's a one sentence added that allows directors to receive vacation, uh, based on the recommendations from the city manager. And, uh, you should have all of that specifically in your packet in front of you.
Any questions for Kate?
I have a question, supervisor, I mean director, is part of the...
Correct. One of the things.
Any other questions? Being done, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept the three changes in this presentation.
We have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. G, splash pad bids?
We went out for bids, uh, Mayor and Commissioners, just recently, and received one from Vortex, I think you all at the study session saw, it was about that thick, and this is all the underlying plumbing and equipment that is needed for the splash, and the pumps, pumps are a big part of it, um, for this splash pad, and so, as we move forward, the high school's helping us design it, Gerald Vick is the in-kind engineer that we appreciate so much, um, we need to have the vendor online that's gonna supply that stuff, and it would be Vortex, based on the soul, the, we did average the paper, and, uh, I mean, me, too.
Wish you one this year.
Me, too.
Yeah. Like tonight, like...
Of course, I'm a little impatient, so, and I think it's gonna be one of the things we got in our...
I think it is.
Been asking for it for a long time, so it, we're, we're looking at 2020, so...
But there's a lot of people to thank for that, and one we don't need to forget is the high school.
Absolutely. There'll be several, uh, you've got a lot of people that are donating a lot of in-kind labor, but basically, this is about an $82,000 bid, and we need your input.
Any questions, Kate?
No, sir.
Entertain a motion to accept it.
I'll make a motion to accept the splash pad bid from Vortex.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. H, approval of Form CT 025B 5-3, report on debt obligation, and I'll cover that right quick, Kate, while I got it right here in front of me, because I was the one that had to sign all this, and this is just telling you that we, uh, did a general obligation bond on a new fire truck, and Philip, is it out front?
Yes, sir, it is.
Everybody makes a deal, okay?
Everybody goes up.
I love something big and red anyway, so, it's nice. Uh, anyway, uh, we wound up with a, uh, got through USDA, uh, a...
35% grant.
Yeah, grant, no, and we took in a hun, we did a note for 170,900, so, that's what that is, but again...
3.5% interest.
It's 3.5% interest, and again, we got a big, or about a 30% of the grant into us, so, through USDA.
So, what we need from the commission is just the, um, approval to sign the, the document that's called report on debt obligation, every time we use the, it's...
It's required by USDA.
Thank you.
Yep, showing we need it. So, uh, again, I think it's great, I hope everybody will take some time looking at the trophies, it's awesome. All right, with that, uh, entertain a motion.
Hey, I'd like a, like a, a blue staple on CT 025B.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's all we have, do we have anybody, please, to pay, anybody signed up to speak?
Two, sir.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, if you don't mind, uh, I'm gonna ask you to, uh, come up, Shirley Webster, come up and state your name and your address, please.
Hello, my name's Shirley Webster, 115 Gardena Street, Mount Pleasant.
Anyway, we wound up with a, got through USDA, a.
35% grant.
Grant. And we took in, we did a note for 170,900 dollars. That's what that is.
3.5% interest.
It's 3.5% interest. And again, we got about a 30% of it granted to us through USDA.
So what we need from the commission is just approval to sign the document that's called Report on Debt Obligation. Every time we use the.
It's required by USDA.
Thank you.
Yep, showing we need it. So again, I think it's great. I hope everybody will take the time to look at the documents. All right, with that, entertain a motion.
I'd like a motion to approve State Department, CT 0258.
Have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor? Aye. All right, that's all we have. Do we have anybody, please, to pay? Anybody signed up to speak? All right, thank you, sir. All right, if you don't mind, I'm going to ask you to come up, Shirley Webster, come up, state your name and your address, please.
Hello, my name is Shirley Webster, 115 Gardena Street, Mount Pleasant. I have this review. First thing is, I think I called and talked to someone about the drain that's backing up. Every time it rains, it backs up into my yard because the drain across the street must be stopped up. Well, they did come, they looked, they drove up beside it, they looked, and they left. And I ain't seen or heard them no more. And this has been happening for quite a while. And I have been calling about it.
What's the address?
115.
Right there, is it right in front of your house, Level 3?
No, it's on the side of my yard. It's not in my yard. It's between my house and the house on my left. And it runs across the street. And it's supposed to go on down to Tulip Street. But, I don't know, something happened. One year, a guy planted trees and blocked it up with cement. I had them to remove that. And now I'm having the same problem.
What I'd ask is, is the.
I'm aware of the situation. I'm not aware of the current status and I'll follow up on that.
Somebody please follow up. Please follow up with Ms. Webster as well as to what remediation or whatever we may need to do, please.
Absolutely.
Okay, the next thing is the park. We appreciate the bathroom, we really do. But what good is it doing if it's locked up? Like as we speak now, it was locked up at 4:30. I don't know who unlocking it or locking it. But at 4:30, sometime 4 o'clock every day, it's locked. There's no trash cans, there's no paper, no nothing. No trash cans on the park. People are throwing the trash on the ground where the trash can container is at. But there's no trash can in it. They have put something up there right now that's laying on the ground. I don't know if it's a swing set, I don't know. But the summer is almost over and you have been promising stuff for how many years? And I'm just not satisfied. I mean, my grandbaby will be grown and gone to college before this park gets fixed up. There's too many kids up there on Clark Manor, My Street, Tulip Street. There's nothing for these kids to do. There's nothing or nowhere for these kids to go. They were going to the community center there for a while, but they got ran away from there. It's nothing for these kids to do. Nothing. Somebody thought was going, this is some guys that was getting together. My grandson was involved. And they was going to the community center practicing basketball, you know, just shooting around. They're getting better in their basketball skills. Well, someone called the police and the police went over there and had their hands on the pistol and scared them to death. And then the park, whoever's over it, said that they wasn't supposed to be over there. But at one time he gave a permission, so I don't know.
Mayor, Commissioners, I'm not aware of the locked bathrooms and trash cans. That'll be taken care of immediately if there's an issue. And then I'd have to look into that. Some of that's familiar as far as kids at the community center. But I don't, I can't answer that question right now.
Bathroom's going locked anywhere between 5:30 and 7 o'clock in the morning.
Well, who is going to lock it up?
Thinks they own the bathroom, they go and lock it when it's ready. And I'm not going to say taffy anymore.
Well, I know who that nut is.
Look, we're not, we're not going to be making personal taxes.
No, I put on my porch and I watch it now.
Ma'am, that's enough. We're not going to make personal taxes.
Well, he's crazy and he thinks that he owns the park, but anyway.
All right, you've had your two minutes. Thank you very much.
Do you know there's a ball, or there's a basketball goal over Caroline's Park?
I don't know.
There is. I was there today.
But the kids, they can't walk over there. That's too far. I don't allow my grandson to go over there.
Well, I know if they were going to the community center, you might have been going over there. I don't know their age.
These are the smaller kids.
Oh, okay. You already know their age.
They can't go over there.
Shirley, I can assure you that Gardena Park is on my mind. And I have personally invested my own money to make sure that it's getting something done to it. So that's all I've got to say about that. Thank you for your time and I appreciate your concern. Next, we have Joseph Brown. If you don't mind, please come forward and state your name and your address, please, sir.
My name is Joseph Brown. My address is 1404 Redstone Drive. Church's address is 105 East Cooper. Right here about this, West Point Baptist Church. The church that, I guess, has been set up for rezoning that I just heard about last night. I didn't get a ballot, a certified ballot, any notification or anything. I'm the pastor in that church. I should have got something. Maybe it got lost in the middle, I don't know. But my question is, what's behind the commercializing of this property? I know it's a property on Main Street, 306, I think it's 306. And the yard runs right back door to our church. And I understand that you're saying that it's going to be all right for someone to come in there and put a commercialized building. That's what I understand you're saying. And you vote yes. Is that right?
It's not a commercialized building. No, you're, I don't think that's. And the reason that we are considering this is we've had the property owner ask us to. And any type of property owner asked the planning commission to do that.
Yeah, but the reason I ask is maybe I'm putting a horse or a car. But if you remember last year, we had a problem with the building next door put.
Yeah, the electronics, right?
Yeah, and all that stuff. It took a year to get them out of there. And I'm just wondering, if you commercialize right behind us, would that open up something like JB Electronics to put stuff, you know, right next door to the church or right behind the church? So I'm just here to let you know that we are opposed to. Many of West Point's members out here, pastors, Mount Pleasant Pastors Association is behind, behind us. And it's about seven churches. I'm just letting you know that I don't think that's the right thing to do.
Well, what we'll do, pastors, we'll duly note your concerns.
Thank you.
And I would encourage you to have your group to attend our next meeting because that will be the public hearing for this. And at that time, it can all be duly noted as well and at that time it'll be voted on. I would encourage you to do that.
Well, I don't understand it, you know, you gave the first reading and everybody voted on it.
We have to. Now, we have to vote on it again as well.
This is three readings, I'm just saying.
September 17th will be the second reading and that's when there's a public hearing. And we're happy to talk to you certainly between now and then. Now, everybody did get certified letters, but as I said previously, not all of them were signed for. So if they weren't signed for, they weren't picked up and they may not have gotten those letters. But any sign was put in front of the property. So notice is important. And so I would encourage you, Pastor Brown, I've worked with you and the Passion Association, I'm happy to sit down with you and talk about. The one thing that Cory did say though is it's not deciding the next use, it's deciding the zoning, if that's appropriate. It's not saying what's going to be there next, if that zoning.
Yeah, but if you open it up for different things to be there, that might not be appropriate for a church. Then you got this fight, you know, that's what JB Electronics going on for over a year about, you know, water's dead and running. People are getting sick. All this, I'm from Flint. How I feel about it, essentially.
Gets home.
Yeah, actually, we will, your concerns will be duly noted and I would encourage you to come to the September meeting to make sure because it will be a public hearing.
And happy to talk to you between now and then.
Yeah, we'd like to try to work with you before that.
Thank you much.
Thank you very much. All right, that's all that have signed up. With that, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second?
Mayor, Michael Fane.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to talk about.
If you don't mind, please state your name and your address.
My name is Rose Cannon. I live on 119 Brownlow Lane. And I have concerns about a letter that we received about wanting to change Brownlow to One Way.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I have concerns about what was in that letter that wanted to change just coming down from Main Street. Everybody come down from Main Street down Brownlow Lane and going out. And just coming in from Olive Street and Merchant Street. Coming in from Main Street, that's a bad idea because any emergency vehicles cannot come down that, from Main Street, and come up Brownlow Lane. They don't try it. They cannot get past that fence. The only way I tell anybody to get to my house is to come down and come down East Merchant, turn left on East Merchant Street, and then come down the hill slowly and watch for Brownlow Lane and then shoot straight up Brownlow Lane to my house. That's the best route to come to Brownlow Lane. Coming down from Main Street is bad.
Ms. Rose, I apologize to tell you, you did receive a letter because we wanted you to have a notice. But we, I think I told you in the study session, that this matter would need to go to the planning commission before it can come to you. So it was taken off the agenda this time. And I drove it. I talked to Ms. Willie about it. And I encourage everybody to drive Brownlow Lane before we get into the vote on it. It is so narrow. We couldn't get, we can get a police car through there, but we can't get a fire truck through there. So we need to give it some careful consideration. But I apologize, you may not have known that it's not on the agenda tonight, but it will be on the agenda in the future.
And I appreciate you speaking on it because I can tell you, we're looking at this for the public's sake, is the reason we're looking at it.
Yeah, okay.
But thank you very much. Chief, we got anybody else? All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn. Motion, seven?
There's a rumor going around.
We're not going to address rumors. If you want to speak, come forward, please, sir. Well, I'm not going to address a lot of rumors.
Oh, no, no, no. I, I'm just wondering, is there a truth to it?
Would, if you don't mind, state your name and your address. And I understand you're, may I sit right there? I'm doing that.
Okay. Dwight Green, 102 Gardena.
Yes, sir.
Now, my issue is, I heard that it was going to be for new employees some vacation. And I wondered, how are they going to get vacation and they're not existing? That's not fair to your longtime employees.
I will take that under advisement that you're getting rumors. I would assure you of one thing. The city manager and I have sat down more than once and discussed this. And there's one thing that I'm going to make sure that's done as long as I am the mayor of this community and everybody is going to be treated fairly, period. No ifs, ands, or buts.
Because when I heard it, I was alarmed for the people that are longtime employees.
I understand.
And if I'm wrong and there's a rumor, I'll take that back.
No, it's okay. I appreciate you being here. We encourage it. We don't know if we don't hear. Thank you. All right, we have a motion to adjourn in a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Thanks, everybody.